We are calling the regular meeting of the Board of Education on October 16, 2019. Don Beeler will be participating via video conference from some place in Florida. The address is online. Please rise to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic whose it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment in partnership with families and our community. Our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and prepare our students to become responsible, global citizens. Do I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. I'm now going to break with the revised agenda because I'd like to say something. I may have your indulgence. As most of you know, our community and school district lost a special person. NYPD Officer Brian Mulkeen died in the line of duty on September 29. Many went to express their condolences on Thursday, October 3, and to the funeral the next day at Sacred Heart. I joined Elsie, Eric, and John Casti at the service, which was also an incredible tribute to Brian with townsfolk and thousands and thousands of police personnel from the NYPD, our community, and from all over. I saw a whole outfit from Boston. This is a testament not only to how we hold the police and those who protect our health and safety, but to Brian. Many Monroe Woodbury seniors lined the street, a tribute recognized and organized in great part by our student representative to the board, Maeve Harrington. Thank you, Maeve. My daughter Eliza graduated Monroe Woodbury with Brian, and I had the pleasure of serving on this board a number of years ago with his mother, Camille. Everything that can be said about Brian has been said in these past two weeks. A Fordham University graduate, he launched his career in finance at Merrill Lynch, but wanting to serve and protect. Brian jettisoned the security at Merrill and went to work protecting us. What makes us a district? What makes us a community is our care and our respect and indeed, our love for one another. Speaking for the board, I would also like to commend Don Russell and the entire Monroe Woodbury Transportation Department for all they did that Friday. And of course, the entire board sends its love and sympathy to Camille and her family, and we will always remember and hold Brian in our hearts.
Thank you. Can I add something to that?
Anybody can add something to that.
So Mrs. Mulkeen came this afternoon. She was just here a little while ago, and she couldn't stay. I don't know why she asked me to lay this because you all know I'm a crier. But she said thank you for all that we did. And she was especially impressed with our high school students who stood outside, and she said that her son would have been so proud. And she couldn't say enough thank yous. So I say thank you to everyone. And please keep her and our family in your prayers. Thank you. What a way to start the meeting.
It got people quiet.
I know.
Oh, dear. And now we continue with a memorial resolution unanimously adopted by the Monroe Woodbury Board of Education. It's a regular meeting on Wednesday, October 16, 2019, whereas Mrs. India Bakker was employed by the Monroe Woodbury Central School District as a teaching assistant. Her employment with the district began January 28, 2016, and whereas through her dedication to the district, India has trusted our lives, the lives of many individuals in our district. It is hereby resolved that the Board of Education on behalf of the entire district extends in memoriam its appreciation and gratitude as well as its sincere condolence to the Bakker family. It is hereby resolved and approved that the flag at Central Valley Elementary School was flown at half-staff on Wednesday, October 2, 2019, in memory of India Bakker. As the above resolution is adopted by the board, it will become part of the official historical records of the district and will serve as a memorial lasting for all time.
Can I say something about her too?
Please.
She was an amazing woman, and anybody who met her, what a month. Anybody who knew her, she was just a special human being. And we've listened to.
We will now have questions and comments from interested citizens. Do we have anybody? I just want to read this. We have rules and regulations about this, but we haven't been adhering to them, so I just want to reiterate. The Board of Education allows a period for public comment at its open meetings. Interested citizens may ask questions or make comments. Each person has three minutes, and we will hold to that. If there are multiple people from one interest group or organization, please pick one to be the spokesperson, and please refrain from talking about specific students or personnel. The Board and administration will not enter into dialogue here, but will either respond at the next meeting or contact you personally with a follow-up. Bernie?
I'm not a public speaker, so I took some notes. And I thought it was going to be raining out, and I didn't think anybody was going to be out, so. My name is Bernie Vega, and I am this year's co-president for Special Education PTA from Monroe Woodbury. I just wanted to comment on some of the initiatives that we have and some of the things that we've been working on with Elsie over the summer and with other administrators as well. We're currently standing at 470 members. That is really big news for SEPTA, and we're so thankful for your support as well. Our goal has been this year 272, and we are at 470, and I'm sure after we're done, we're going to have 10 more from the Board of Education as well. So how did we reach this goal? We really worked together with the admins from every building. We've worked over the summer with them. We sat with them. We talked about every building's initiatives and their particular special needs goals and their population. So we met with every building PTA as well, as we learned that the PTA in every building is what helps and creates a culture in the building as well. So we met with them, learned their goals and the needs of every building and the people there. We also met with Eric Ullao, Karen Jordan, Gail Tullow, and Christine Ricker as well. We will need to meet with Don Russell. We'll be meeting with her November. Thankfully, Elsie approved adding National Special Education Day to our calendar, December 2. As the board, we felt like we needed to reach the families with invisible disabilities and not just light it up blue in April. We needed to teach other, we needed to engage those parents and those families with disabilities as well. We will have a Spiritware online sale that's going to end October 28, but first, and we'll be wearing that, we'll be asking some students to wear, the students and families to wear that, are black and purple as well on that day. This year, we have teacher liaisons, Vanessa Shares and Randy Connolly, who are helping us really understand what it's like to be a teacher. We can't place all these demands without knowing what's going on in the classroom and particularly in North Main, Central Valley. Every building is just so different, and for us to sit here as SEPTA and think, you have to do this, you have to do that, without getting boots on ground and really getting to know the PTAs and the building admins, we took it upon ourselves to do that as well. We're also working with other SEPTAs in Hudson Valley, and we're also working with other SEPTAs in Westchester to see what's working for them so that we don't have to feel like we have to reinvent the wheel as well. Two of our SEPTA members sit on the Orange County Committee, on the Think Differently Committee, where we'll be rolling out a campaign that encourages people, businesses, organizations to think differently as well. And the initiative seeks to change the way individuals, businesses, organizations, and communities relate to our neighbors with all abilities. Think Differently will be an Orange County action, and it has been embraced throughout Dutchess County, New York State, and across the nation. More and more people from all walks of life are choosing to focus on the inherent potential of every individual regardless of disability. So with that said, we've had conversations with Elsie about how do we make this district a Think Differently district? And, hold on, in the process. So what do we do? We've met, like I said before, we've met with all the PTAs and just started with, okay, what's happening? For instance, at North Main, we have the newcomer program, so we have to make sure that our things are going, our flyers are going out in both Spanish and in English, that all our languages, all our flyers are inclusive of all. So we're helping our PTAs by providing checklists also of what it looks like. So if you don't have a child with special needs, you may not know, you may need to know that this flyer is including your child. You may know, of course, we're inviting everybody. But there's particular words that make a big difference that say, "All children of all abilities are welcome," or "Sent quiet time in a dance," right? Like there's a sensory room or a quiet station or whatever it may be. We may be building it, but parents may not know. Can I bring to one, a one-to-one? And these aren't novel ideas. We're not reinventing the wheel here. We just want to make sure that parents know that all the children are welcome at all times as well. So one of the wonderful examples is that intentional inclusion, for instance, is at Central Valley, we're having a family fall ball with DJs, and they're going to have a resting station, quiet time with bean bags and Legos and books so that children, and not just children with special needs, but SEPTA covers twice exceptional kids too. And we've met with different parents that say, "My kid wants to go to the dance for 30 minutes," and they may just want to disconnect, and they don't have to have autism so that they want to disconnect. They may just want to sit down and take a break. We're not all party people. And so they're very, you know, they're interested and they're excited, and they're coming to us, and they're open to us, and we're just thankful that the schools have been very open about it as well and accepting. We've heard from building principals that we say, "What can we do to help support you?" And they said, "Well, come to our building BLC meeting so that you can get to know us." So this year, we're going to have one representative of our board going also to the building level, to the BLC meetings as well. We've also had at Smith Globe Quiet Time during Holiday Boutique Book Fair. It's the little things that just invite the rest of our people. So we just want to, you know, capabilities week. Brian Juddis does Pine Tree capabilities week, does it so well, and he shared with us how we can do it at North Main, at Central Valley, and little tips like that. So we're just kind of being that liaison and actively doing that, and North Main, for instance, is very interested in going into the modified basketball team for Spirit Night instead of just, not any basketball game, but that particular one, so we can be intentional about being inclusive of all of our teams. So I just have three things to ask of you guys. The first one is to, you know, continue with intentional inclusion in our district, and a quote that resonates with us is, "Inclusion is not a classroom. It's not a co-teach classroom. It's not just that. It is a state of mind." And to welcome you to attend our October 30 general meeting with PPS at Scarlett Lewis Choose Love. And three, check if you're a SEPTA member. If you're not, you're welcome. I'll have flyers here as well. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
We just broke the rule that I--
I'm sorry.
No, no, no. I have something to say.
Just comment.
In three, keeping it to three minutes. SEPTA or the PTA, if you have something that you need to present to us, ask to be on, you can be on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
You know, if you come to me or Elsie and say, "I want to, you know, I want to be on the agenda," you can pass out flyers or whatever it is. Because SEPTA and the PTA and organizations that are so closely aligned with the school district and so important, you know, you don't have to squeeze the entire year into three minutes. I appreciate you trying to do it, but really, you can present.
Okay. We had a wonderful Kids Connect program. I'm sorry, I'm just going to go ahead. One more thing. A Kids Connect program that happened this weekend where Lori Hawk came up with Chris Verro, and, you know, it was the head coach, and they bowled. The varsity bowling team showed up to help children with special needs bowl. And that was just a really nice, organic, again, inclusive opportunity. So we thank everybody for doing so.
I'm going to break the rule also quickly and just say that I'm going to ask you to send, all of our email addresses are on the website, so please send us the link to sign up for SEPTA. Takes less than five minutes for my fellow board members.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Rox? Is that right, Rox?
Good evening. Thanks for hearing me tonight. I contacted Ms. Vitucci, and it was about the tennis courts, the elementary school tennis courts. And my question related to the maintenance program for the tennis courts, and they're beautiful courts. It's a beautiful facility, and I was just wanted, I was interested to see if there was a program for maintenance just to protect that facility. And so what happens is, over time, there's cracks in the courts, and if you maintain them, you can keep them for a long time, and if you don't, it's the same as anything. So I was directed to contact buildings and grounds, which I did, and I don't have their name, which I guess is better because I'm not supposed to say names. And anyhow, they told me that it was a capital improvement that the courts needed to be completely removed, demolished, and completely replaced. And that struck me as kind of dramatic, and they're not that old, and maybe they could be fixed, and I was just curious if there was a plan to preserve and maintain the tennis courts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I, a second real quicky?
Sure.
It's related but unrelated, and that is, I want to know what the policy is on using the lighting at those courts for regular people, not students.
For regular people.
Yes. Yeah, and that's it.
Thank you.
We'll give you a call, and we'll give you some responses to both questions.
Thank you very much.
You're right.
And possibly mention them here. There's always been a question about lights at the tennis courts. I know also some drainage may have been changed as a result of all of the work, and there was some concern about the effect on the tennis court, so maybe we could have some sort of a report on that. I know that there are some things that the DOT, in connection with the drainage and with the 131 interchange, that has affected a number of facilities on the campus.
Yes.
So we should have an update on that. Do you have an update, Elsie, on--
Actually, I don't have an update, but I have Mr. Casti, who's going to get up and speak and say a couple of things. I know that there was a question regarding the new prom procedure, and so I wanted Mr. Casti to speak to that.
I can do that.
Yeah.
Sorry.
It's your show.
Yeah, Mrs. Rodriguez asked me to come up and just give a quick update and recap of the new practice that we have instituted for the proms. First, again, this was, came out of the youth risk survey, which Mrs. Rodriguez mentioned at the last meeting, as well as conversations at our high school drug council and during some of the anonymous alerts that have come to my attention. So with all that information, I then reached out to our PTA, some of our all-night grad committee members, past and present, as well as staff members who happen to be parents in our district as well, as a parent committee that I had discussions with. And then I reached out to our advisors for several of our extracurricular, co-curricular activities, including SAD, STARS, Student Council, each of the class advisors for the classes, the grades in the high school, as well as the kindness committee and the DC lead trip students. Those are just a few I reached out to, and athletic clubs. So I reached out to as many as I could to see if they would let their members of their groups know that we, I wanted to have a meeting to have a discussion about some of the concerns that I had. And in those meetings, we talked about whether or not I was overreacting or I had misinformation or if I was just, you know, going off reservation. And resoundingly, all the groups I met with said, "No, there was an issue in our school." So with this in mind, we came up with plans on what we could do differently in advance. I did look what other schools are doing nationwide, and they are doing a very similar practice to what we are doing to help raise awareness of underage drinking and social hosting. With that, you know, the next step was we put out the information to the parents and the students. We've had two of our events already, and so far, we've had a little over 100 families participate in our events. The first two events were really focused on the social host law and underage drinking, and we have four more events coming up. Those are Kathy Sullivan is going to be on November 6. Eric Jackson will be on January 28. ADAC will do a presentation of If They Had Known on March 10, and Rick Adam will be doing a presentation on April 28. And these do touch a little bit on underage drinking, but they also are working on discussing how, you know, choices we make when we are under the influence of different drugs and alcohol, what that can, how that can impact us as well. I think I covered everything that was asked in the last meeting.
I think one of the questions that we had, and if you don't have the answer, that's fine, but one of the questions was, well, what happens to a student at the end of the year?
Sure.
And there's an incident or a parent, the parent isn't able to attend, like, what is the plan for that?
Sure. So unlike other school districts throughout our nation, we are offering six opportunities where others only offer one. So we felt that creating six different opportunities gave everyone the opportunity to be able to attend and be able to meet that requirement.
And that's just for these seniors, am I correct?
No.
Six opportunities, what I'm saying is, if you're a senior, you have, this is your year to do it.
Correct.
You have six opportunities.
Correct.
But if you're a freshman, you multiply that times--
We would look to have 24 opportunities for a freshman.
Okay.
That would be our goal, to continue to have at least six opportunities as we go forward.
Okay.
We do understand that there might be something that comes up, and we will look at that case by case, but the expectation is that the child and the parent both attend together, and the child would be the one that is signing in when they come in, and the parent's there when they sign in.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything to say earlier?
No.
The only thing I wanted to ask or just comment on is, and you and I had sort of talked about it offline, if we could use the full resources of the district to make sure that the dates are out there and it's publicized on the webpage and maybe even more than that, because I'd hate to get a situation where we're looking at it in May.
What we're doing now is through the page, also the page 12 alerts that we have, we're setting up calls and email blasts to go out for the next few months, so that's not even something we have to think about. It will automatically start happening.
Perfect. Thanks. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of August 28, 2019, and September 18, 2019, regular meetings?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Do I have a motion to approve the annual professional performance review hardship waiver resolution?
Motion.
Second.
And that moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. We have a motion to approve the first reading of the policy manual updates, school admissions, residency requirements, and student health services. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Motion.
Second.
Do you want to explain?
We just basically revised it so it follows with New York State law. Most of the student health services is really just what the law has, New York State has changed, so we just make it our, the policy to run. The language is the same. That's really all. We didn't really change much on there, just following New York State law.
Okay.
It's what we have to do.
Thanks. Do we have a motion to approve the appointment of the district-wide safety plan team?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Do I have a motion to approve the revised student calendar 2019, 2020?
Motion. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Elsie, what's the, do you want to explain the change publicly here?
So what we did was, school was supposed to start on the 3rd, and so we decided actually on the 4th. The 3rd was just for teachers, and so with the incident that we had, we took Wednesday as a superintendent conference day, which we're entitled to have. And so we had used all of our superintendent conference day. When I used this past Friday to not have students in, what we did was, in February, I think it was February, it's been removed from the calendar, but I believe it's February 14, was set as a superintendent conference day. It'd be teachers, but no students. This time, we've changed it. We're going to have students and teachers. That allows us to still have one more superintendent conference days in the bank in case there's any emergency. So we're hoping that, I think with these changes, we're in a good position. I have no idea what the weather's going to be like, so bear with me, but I think that we're in a good position because we still have a superintendent conference day in the bank that we could use if we need to.
Great. Thank you. We passed that, right?
We did.
We're going to have a presentation of the newcomer ENL programs. Aaron Morales, Director of Instructional Support Service. You're up.
Dr. Morales, and we have two doctors in the houses, in the house. Dr. Morales and Dr. Hassler.
I just wanted to thank the Cabinet and the Board of Ed for the opportunity to give you a brief summary on the progress we've made in different programs for our, particularly our newcomer ENL students. Prudence. That's it? I clicked.
Oh, my gosh. Didn't we just use this thing?
We just practiced.
Maybe it's at the end. Roll up to the top. Are you using a Mac or a Chrome browser? I apologize. Are you at the beginning? Is it a Mac?
It's a Mac.
Slide 13. So go on. Shouldn't mess up. Yeah. There you go. I apologize that it's a Mac.
Okay. Here we go.
I don't have time to do the Chrome browser.
Okay. So the chart in front of you--
I love it.
We're good. The chart in front of you just shows our district enrollment trends of English language learners throughout, from 2015, 16 to the current year. The first total line is your quick look across as to how our numbers have risen, and one thing to note while you're looking at that is, every year prior to 1920, we're reflecting on numbers towards the end of the school year, and we're starting this year with two more. Well, if you count all the ones from when I made this presentation to today, which is about four days, we're up about four more even from that number. So we are starting up with a greater number than what we finished with last year. The bottom number just shows you, including our students who've tested commanding in the last two years. We still provide testing accommodations for them, and we still monitor their progress through our academic intervention services. So currently, we are in year three of a newcomer program at our high school. We are in year one of a newcomer program at North Main, and we're also in year one of a modified bilingual kindergarten, and I'll get into a little bit more of that in a little bit. So a little snapshot of our high school newcomer program. In 2017, 18, of six students that were brand new to the district and experienced nothing other than the newcomer program, three of those students passed all four of their core content area classes, which is the newcomer program, completing the year with seven credits. Prior to that, the trends were showing that these students were finishing a year with less than one credit. Those three students, the following year, as we tracked their progress, they also passed both their algebra and biology regions as what would then be considered a typical ninth grade. So that was a success. Two students we kept in the newcomer program. They enrolled late. One student did withdraw from the high school. Last year, 1819, we started with 12 students, and by June, we were up to 22. 18 students passed all of the content courses, completing the year with, again, six to seven credits. credits. And currently, we are at six students enrolled to date, to start this year. So at North Main, we, we anticipated, if you had asked us in the beginning of August, we were expecting to start the program with a total of about 23 students, and by the second week of September, we are up to 42. As of two days ago, we are at 43. It is a district-wide program for all second through fifth grade students, so if a student enrolled and they were slated to go to CV or to Pine Tree, and they are coming from another country and speaking only Spanish, we did opt to bring them to North Main to experience the newcomer program. It's a little bit different than the high school, because we're only focusing on specialized ELA and math instruction. So the students are, they go as a cohort of combined second and third graders, and they receive instruction with Sarah Bennett, who's sitting in the audience behind us, thank you. And then we pull fourth and fifth graders, who receive ELA and math instruction with Sarah. There's also a bilingual teaching assistant in the room, as well as additional support through our reading teachers, our math specialists, and ENL teachers. Students get mainstream opportunities to go back into the classroom for science, social studies, the specials, art, music, PE, as well as lunch and recess. And of course, this is not a year-long program for any student, as they start to show us through different benchmark opportunities, that they're acquiring enough English language and academic vocabulary and academic skills, we will look to push them into a mainstream At Smith-Clove, we're in one year, again, of that modified bilingual kindergarten. I say it's modified, there are, there is a state model of a bilingual K, which is very strict as to how much of your time is spent speaking English and speaking Spanish. But we're doing this to address the needs of our students, again, who are speaking no English, and the large, the vast majority of these students have not experienced any type of kindergarten. So the goal of this program is really, it's the same learning standards as a typical kindergarten classroom, but we are utilizing a teacher who is a certified, New York State certified bilingual teacher, as well as a bilingual teaching assistant. And again, those same throughout, with benchmarks throughout the year, we will have the opportunity to, as students acquire enough English language and vocabulary, to have them go to a typical kindergarten classroom. There's a lot to be said for students being exposed to the English language from their age-appropriate peers, so we do look to increase that as they're ready. So that brings us to our middle school. That's the building that we have not yet put a plan, a newcomer plan into action. So the chart that we're looking at shows you the overall ENL enrollment by level. So when you, as an ENL student takes the state assessment, the NICE slot, they can test at one of the four levels, entering, emerging, transitioning, expanding. If you test commanding, you're out of ENL. The trend to notice is that even though the total number from September 18 to September 19 is down about six students, if you look up to the top, the entering and emerging, last year, those are the, entering and emerging is the lowest level. That's where you're speaking the least amount of English. So we were starting with six kids at those levels each, and we're double that for this year. If you look at the higher levels, where those students need less support, the transitioning and expanding, that's where we're experiencing, experiencing a decrease. So even though we have less students, their needs are significantly greater. So what we are proposing is to have one sixth grade and one seventh, eighth grade combined newcomer program. It would allow for specialized instruction in ELA, math, science, and social studies, basically being taught through while we're teaching them to read. So lots of nonfiction texts that's designed for adolescent students who do not speak the English language. They would still have mainstreaming opportunities through academic intervention services, the encores, lunch and recess. And what we are proposing is an increase of .2 in staffing. What that would allow us to do is maintain the level of service we're providing for those transitioning kids, where they are, they have more English, but they're still not, they, they still need support to do well in their core academic classes. So that increase of the .2 would allow us to maintain that level of service. And then just a few quick highlights. Last year was a great year for the high school. We had 11 current ENL students walk across the stage and receive a diploma, and we had a combined 40 passing region scores, which is significantly higher than where we've been. Another area to note is with our spell program over the summer. We had a, we had a big increase in our student enrollment, and we averaged about 120 students. We added a fifth week of instruction, and we also introduced specials this year. So students were able to get continued exposure to phys ed, art, and music. And I will leave you with a quick clip of spell. Are there any questions?
If I'm understanding you correctly, the middle school currently does not have the newcomer program?
No. So that's what we're.
So what model are they using currently? Are they using push-in or?
So it's a combined. So we do have push-in support, and we also have standalone ENL to meet the New York State regulations. So it's a combined for, we have two full-time staff members and 1.8 staff member. So with the new program, it would be looking to implement that, the modified newcomer program, and then if we increase that .8 to a 1.0, we'd be able to maintain the same level of service for all students.
Thank you.
It's the traditional model, the traditional pull-out, push-in model that we've had for many years now.
How much capacity do you currently have for this year for students that arrive throughout the year?
That's a good question. We are not too much. We are, it's a very hard population to predict. You know, I would not have predicted that we would be getting, we would be starting the high school with six students. That's showing a decrease in the trend there. So with looking at certification areas and building assignments, we have, we have some room, and we've adjusted, we have adjusted for some staff already this year. We've kind of reallocated some teachers to pick up where the buildings have been hit harder. But should we keep going at a significant rate, we may be coming back to, to ask for additional staffing.
And the challenge has been, you know, part of the reason why the focus started at the high school was because, you know, similar to Mrs. Donahue's question, if a student came in who was new to the country, before we had the newcomer model, they were basically given the equivalent of a ninth grade schedule along with ENL support, and, you know, we did our best to give them whatever English language acquisition skills that we could, until the program was developed, and then if we got new entrants, any time along the year, we were able to put them into that program. Looking at the slide that Dr. Morales showed, during the 1819 school year, you had eight students who were at an entering ENL level come from September to June, which basically means that those eight students, which was more than doubled the numbers from the beginning of the school year, were each individually given a schedule at the middle school, given traditional ENL support, and we kind of like pieced it together. Not having a program like this, you know, makes it much more difficult to be able to support the kids in that capacity.
I agree completely. I know what it's like to have students come into your classroom, and there is zero language, English, and then try and, you know, teach a, a content.
Right.
And a program like this is extremely valuable to getting them more up to speed with the English language, so they can become mainstream in all of their classes. I just know traditionally throughout the year, there can be bumps in the road in terms of population entering the district that need these services, and I wanted to know how we can make sure that we're prepared when they enter, that we can support all of them.
And part of that, too, in, you know, I don't want to just say that it's always going to come back and look for additional staffing, but part of it, as well, is that, you know, we're keeping a very close eye on some students at North Main. And, you know, should those students look like they're ready to go, well, then that would typically open up two seats for students who could be coming in. So that's the important piece of keeping it as a fluid program as well.
It was based on the NICE slot, whether they place out of program?
Yes, the only way out. So the only way in is the NICE tell, and the only way out is the NICE slot.
And that's once a year?
Yes.
And I think that's a concerning number, when you look at the 27.
Actually, I'm wrong. If you score high enough on your New York State ELA assessment, you can get out.
Okay.
But that doesn't typically happen.
But they're both given around the same time, anyway?
Yes. But you get your ELA results, I don't get the NICE slot results until the end of August.
And I think that the, part of the reason why the presentation's being given now is because if you look at the 2017, 2018 school year, we started out with three, we ended the year with 10. Students either tested beyond the entering level or moved to the high school the following year, so the entering number went back down to six. At the end of the year, it was 14. Students either moved to the high school or tested out, but now, September 2019, starting with 11 students at the beginning of the school year, showing the amount of increase that we've had during the school year, that 11 number, you know, makes it very challenging, starting off with 11 students and supporting them right at the onset of the school year.
So is that the reason for the decrease at the high school, then, besides the graduates? If they've accomplished that exam in the spring, if they were not seniors and did not graduate, but they met the goal, then they are no longer in the program for the following September, correct?
The newcomer program?
Right.
Right. So if they've successfully completed that first year?
Okay.
We push them out into what's a typical ninth grade schedule with co-teach opportunities for the content areas.
And that's the soonest, so that it's only offered the one time in the year? So once they're in the program in September, they basically stay in until the spring?
No.
Okay.
So at North Main, we're keeping a very close eye on, you know, the vocabulary that they're acquiring, the reading level if they're ready, and we think that they're able to be supported by a typical ENL model in addition to AIS services, then we'll look to, to push them out.
Okay.
At the high school, we've had plenty of students that we've kind of seen that they've come in, and it's our students who are, who are coming to us with more education. Again, the vast majority of these students have, we call them SIF, they're students with interrupted formal education. The ones who are coming in and they don't speak English, but they've, they've been going to school, they're picking up very quickly, and we start trialing them. You know, we're going to put you every other day in a bio class and keep you the support here until we see that you can do it by yourself. So no, we don't keep them, you can stay in it for the full year, but it's not, it's not a set thing from, from entry.
Okay. I just want to add one more thing, is that I want the board to understand, this is not a requirement. We do this here in Monroe Wood Valley, and, and you can probably attest to it, a lot of school districts don't take this model.
No.
They do what is the minimum that we're required to do, because it's, it's, it's an expensive model. So we do this because there's been a lot of thought taken into consideration as to what's, what's the best way to educate students who maybe have not had a formal education. So this is a very specialized program. You probably won't see this in most other schools.
And it's also a matter of scale. BOCES has, BOCES has a newcomer program, where, you know, depending upon the numbers, we could send students there, but because of the numbers that we're talking about, it doesn't make sense to send that number of students to a BOCES program when we have the capacity to be able to offer it in-house with our students and offer a lot of the flexibility that we're talking about here, that just doesn't make sense to.
And it saves them one more transition.
Correct.
Well, not only that, I'm sorry. It also exposes them, a lot of the programs that are at BOCES don't have the art, the music.
Correct.
We, we as a district are committed for all of our students to have that. So this is very unique, where we're giving them the art, the music, the bilingual program that we have at Smith-Clove, you know, I invite any of the board members to go to North Main and attend this program.
I think we did see it a little bit last year. I think Dawn, you and I were there for something else with Mr. Coto, and I think we happened to go into one of these classes, if I remember correctly.
This is, this is new. This is brand new this year.
You might have been at the spell program.
It might have been a different, it might have been a spell program. But, but I also want to commend the teacher, Sarah Bennett, for the newcomer program at North Main. I did get to visit, and the whole team does an amazing job. And the same thing at, at Smith-Clove. It's just, and the high school. These teachers are really dedicated to what they do, and, and they should be commended for it.
Suzanne.
Yeah. I don't know if you have the data yet, high school graduation rates. My past experience is that many ENL students don't graduate in four years, they graduate in five. Has this model changed that?
No. If anything, it's, it's actually, for a newcomer, it would keep you on that five-year trajectory. Because we're, we're looking.
But I do think it increases the possibility of them graduating in four.
Right.
Yes, because, you know, one of the things that Karen said at the beginning was that, under the original model, when students are only getting after a full year of school, one to two credits over the course of the year.
They're getting six or seven.
Mathically, it makes graduating within four years much more difficult, but when you have students who are completing five, six, seven credits over their first year, they're much more likely to have the opportunity to be able to graduate within four years.
And again, it's, it's, I have to say, the team in each building has been incredible, but it's really looking at each student very individually, because we have to look at how old they are as well. You know, if we have a 16-year-old coming into the high school for the first time, we're keeping a very close eye on that timeline, and how many credits are being acquired, and how many regions attempt and successful passes.
Thank you, Dr. Morales.
Thank you.
It's an important program. I just keep having to remind myself that in a public school, you don't get to choose a lot of things. You don't get to, like a private school, you admit, you have a choice about admitting people. We have to respond effectively to who shows up, and this is, this is important for that, you know, that cohort of people that need that help. So thank you.
Thank you.
Dawn, same can be said for charter schools, they get to choose, and we don't.
Yes.
That is true.
It is true.
Charter schools, that's right. Okay. Do you want to have a five-minute break, so that we can?
Yeah, we, we're concerned about the weather out there, so we are asking.
Right. Let's have a five-minute break, so students who are here in the government class can get their papers or.
And the adults, and the administrators.
Administrators, go home.
You could, you could thank, Damas Roddy, he's sending you all home. Don't all run.
Run, yeah.
Get home safely. Get home safely. You can really go.
Go.
They think this is a trick. Oh my God.
Clear the room. All right. We are resuming the meeting. No board business was conducted during that short break. We have reports by board education committees. Chris?
Policy is going to meet on Tuesday, 8:15. I don't even know what we're discussing, because we finished what we had. Is it new stuff, I think?
I think we have some new policies coming up. I'll double check.
It'll be quick, Stacy. I know Stacy's got a hair appointment or something. It's got to be out quick.
Very quick.
Try to keep it under an hour and a half. That would be a goal.
That would be a goal.
That would be a goal.
Dawn, Visitation Committee, Orange County School Boards?
Visitation, no update, other than the middle school visitation has been scheduled for the 28th of this month, and Orange County, there has not been a meeting that I have attended since the last.
Okay. Facilities Committee is done. Making a presentation from Florida, or is Patrick going to?
Patrick's going to, I don't think.
I'm the winner.
It would lose a lot, because I'd be waving my hands.
Okay. Anything new on?
Well, we, we had a meeting last week, last Thursday. There's a series of change orders on the agenda for board approval tonight, mostly small items. It was about $50,000. You know, the only, the only significant thing really is.
Well, we had a meeting last week, last Thursday. There's a series of change orders on the agenda for board approval tonight, mostly small items. It was about $50,000. You know, the only significant thing really is to extend the netting around the third baseline on the baseball field. That's sort of an expensive item. We did that sort of late in the game, but we felt it was important to kind of cover that dugout. In terms of the change orders, they're going to be applied against an allowance, which is like a credit in the contract. So you may have noticed that the net impact on our contingency fund, which is being depleted, is only around $276. So that's the update. We're on schedule, you know, to complete everything, I would say, in the end of the month. And the upper field, the track is going to start somewhere around October 21st. It's going to take a couple of weeks, and the softball field would be, I think, completed around the end of the month as well.
Terrific. And we're within contingency.
We are. We're getting close, but we're nearing the end of the project, so.
Any word on the end of all the 32 construction, getting that cleared out?
I think it's the end of this month, very soon.
Yeah, it's supposed to be the end of this month.
I mean, I actually happened to talk to the DOT guy from the head engineer, Scott Geiger, today about another matter. It was about repaving the parking lot that's adjacent to the baseball field. And so that's something that Yonkers Construction will be doing for us, that there'll be like a final top coat and striping. So that could be beneficial relative to the project as well, because I think we may have a credit from the contractor, because Yonkers is going to take care of that and not apply landscaping. So it's good.
Good. Report by student representative Maeve Arrington.
It's me. So today, I just wanted to do a little, like a brief little update on my anti-vaping campaign. I wanted to share some information that stood out to me in the articles that I've been reading myself and that Mr. Hubert has been generous enough to share with me, that I read on New York Times that they are now comparing victims of vaping-related illnesses to those of, like, chemical warfare. Like, and I thought that was pretty crazy, that everyone should know that. Now that the 26 have actually died now from, due to vaping illnesses, the most recent, which was in New York, actually, New York City, I think it's extremely necessary that I take my initiative rapidly to, like, work with the school district. And I plan on meeting with Mr. Masano in the middle school and the health department to, you know, discuss that. So that's really it. I'll report back on it next time.
Yeah, I read that, too. Chemical burns. This was supposed to be the savior of getting people off of tobacco.
Also, I would like to say, and Mr. Casti's not here anymore, I don't think, but I wanted to thank everybody, all the students who, I don't know if anybody's going to hear this, but I wanted to thank all the students who came out to support and show respect for Brian Mulkeen. And I wanted to thank Mary Dwyer, Mr. Casti, Mrs. Ali, and Mr. Yarmus for allowing me to be part of such a wonderful thing. And we sort of, like, put it together in a little amount of time, but we had a great outcome. So I just wanted to thank everybody who showed their support. It was really beautiful, so.
Thanks.
Can I just say something to what you said? You said that vaping was supposed to take, was supposed to be this wonderful thing. You don't believe that, do you?
Yes, I thought, yes, I know somebody who was a big general in the anti-smoking campaign, and he said, this is going to, this is going to be, you know, like methadone, it was going to get people off of heroin, and this was getting people off of cigarettes and all that was harmful in cigarettes. Absolutely.
It was supposed to.
It didn't. It's worse.
But then why would you have flavors like bubblegums and things of that nature that encourages young children?
That's exactly what it's all about.
That's precisely.
It's about money.
And 12 years ago, when I spoke to this person, vaping was just coming out, and it wasn't exploited in the way it has been, which is encouraged. Plus, I think there's probably something in the burning of it that is harmful, no matter what the flavor is. The flavor is going towards encouraging youngsters to...
But if you look at the revenue of tobacco sales, having to coincide with the introduction of vaping, you would see that there is some correlation between the two of them. It is a way...
It actually leads to smoking.
Correct.
Right.
It does, because it has a higher nicotine content than cigarettes do, so I'm addicted faster.
It hasn't even been reviewed, what's in these vaping things.
I also have another question about the age, because I know you said you're going into the middle school?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm seeing commercials with advertisers that have this bubblegum flavor, and they're showing kids that are like third, fourth, fifth grade.
I actually was reading, I was reading today, and they said that the most common ages of kids to start vaping is like 10 to 14, 10 years old.
That's really frightening.
Yeah, so it's pretty crazy.
And this was invented in China, I think, because of the difficulty to get tobacco there. So this was their alternative.
Right.
Another wonderful example.
And it is definitely, it's affecting schools nationwide. We have a lot of, you know, we have students that are engaging in vaping, and they're getting in trouble for it. And that's, you know, so it's, we're, this is a serious thing, and I'm really happy that you're addressing it, and it's coming from a high school student, because I think you have more credibility than we do. And so we, I applaud you. This is, whatever we can do to help you, you got it.
Thank you so much.
Personnel, Matt?
Good evening. I'm just looking, I'm asking for approval for the items listed under personnel.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any questions for Matt? There being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. We have a resolution, be it resolved, that the Board of Education of Monroe Woodbury Central School District approve a certain Third Amendment to the Employment Contract between Monroe Woodbury Central School District and Superintendent of Schools. And do I have a motion to approve that resolution?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution, the Board of Education approves a certain Third Amendment to the employment contracts between Monroe Woodbury and Central Office?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Business and financial, Patrick?
Yes, John, I'd like to respectfully request the approval of these items. We have a couple of contracts for professional development and wastewater treatment facility, our standard monthly financial reports for August. We have some items listed as surplus or obsolete, a vehicle from the bus garage, and a technology computer equipment. We have the capital project change orders. I had mentioned earlier, it's both the turf project and the Smart Schools Bond Act. It's about $39,000, still under budget for additional drops in our school buildings. And finally, under donations, we have a $70 donation from Your Cause to North Main Elementary, $33.51 from Global Impact to Pine Tree, and then a book donation from MW Cares. I think Dr. Casser was going to comment on that.
Right now?
Yeah.
All right, here we go.
Here we go, baby.
So on September 19th, Richard Speck did a series of assemblies at our high school. Mr. Speck is a returning presenter to our school district. He previously presented on MW Cares. He was sponsored by the MW Cares Committee. The focus of his presentation was on cultivating kindness. I wasn't able to see him present on MW Cares Day. However, I was able to attend the presentation on September 19th, and he was exceptional. The presentation that I saw was for the entire sophomore and junior class. And you can gauge the effectiveness of a presenter based upon the level of attention of the student body. And you want to talk about engaged, you could not hear a peep in the auditorium during his presentation. He was outstanding. In addition to sponsoring the assembly, the MW Cares Committee is also donating copies of Mr. Speck's literature, his book, to each of the libraries of our elementary schools. So thank you very much to the MW Cares Committee for their sponsorship of both the assemblies as well as the donations to school libraries.
Thanks. And finally, we had a donation of a painting from Ariana Rubio, I think...
So I have a letter that she wrote. She said, "Thank you for the consideration of this gift to the Monroe Woodbury District." She's a former graduate of ours. "As I've come to know the ENL population over the past few years, specifically the North Main Street community, I've been touched by their journey to this country, saddened by the traumas they have encountered in their homelands and their long, arduous journeys here, but most impressed by their resilience and love of learning in a new environment. My painting depicts the journey to the USA and specifically the Monroe Woodbury community. Many families walked," and she has in quotes, "footprints, and for some, was their first time flying, and they have a plane. The sun symbolizes light through darkness. The red, white, and blue colors, along with Lady Liberty, represents our country. The girl's face with another inside represents the inner conflict of leaving their homeland to America, walking one way but looking the other way, leaving their country. The T-shirt symbolizes hurriedly having to leave with just a shirt on their back. The death, the safety and the completion of their travels, their new home, USA and Monroe Woodbury. With love and gratitude, Ariana Rubio and Decat 2022."
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions for Patrick? There being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Financial, so carried. Committee on Special Education, Preschool Special Education, do I have a motion to approve the arrangements, placements made by the Committee on Special Education and Preschool Special Education, 18.1, 12.3, 14.4? A motion?
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Reports by board and Central Office. Going to start with Barghav, who has done so much. I'm just talking about me. He got, he got my computer to work. I hear he's been doing other things, but he got me logged on, and I want to thank you. Barghav?
Well, thank you for using Chromebooks. That's a great start.
You're welcome. I don't have a choice.
So last six weeks been really interesting, but overall, it's a great team effort, and everybody, from all the stakeholders' perspective, it's been a tremendous experience. So we were able to finish reimagining all the computers in all of our instructional and non-instructional buildings by yesterday, and today we were able to bring our security camera system up as well. So the Raptor is working now, security camera systems are working. So we have a few more steps to go, but we are very close to about, I would say, about 95, 96% close to normal. So it's been tremendous. I mean, it's a lot, but six weeks is a longer time, too. So it's a great teamwork from all of us. So thank you for all your support during the process.
And Don Beeler sent an article where I think 500 schools in the United States have been hit in the past year.
Last year.
Hacked with ransomware. Incredible.
We are, I would say, one of the very, very, very few ones that didn't pay anything and almost had a really good plan to just bring everything back to normal.
Right. Eric?
Just to echo the various resolutions at the beginning of the board meeting, just sincere condolences to the families that were impacted by the recent losses to our community. Maeve thanked a whole slew of people during her presentation for her participation in organizing the services for Brian Mulkeen. However, you should be thanked, because I happen to know that you did an extensive amount of work in organizing the student body, so hats off to you. Thank you to the MW Cares Committee for their donation. Thank you to the Art Department for their, Mr. Kravitz, and I went downtown to see the kids' painting, and that was awesome. Thank you to Dr. Morales for her presentation. And just a reminder, Health and Wellness and DLC meetings are on the evening of October 29th. Thanks.
Patrick?
Just one quick thing. So we normally do our presentation of financial statements sort of mid-October at this meeting. We're going to push that out to November, just based on the unusual start to the year. But we're going to be on time with all our submissions to the state, and that's it.
Matt?
I really don't have much. Thank you very much. Have a nice night. Get on, please.
Stacy?
I want to thank all the presenters tonight. I, too, will echo my condolences to the families that we've had some tragic loss this year so far, and I wish them all the best. And I really want to thank LC and the entire cabinet and school district, because I know that it was, it was really great to be part of a community that extended the way that we did, and I think everybody should be really proud. Maeve, congratulations, because I heard a lot of great things at the high school from my high school kids. So that's it. Have a good night.
Anthony?
I got a chance to go to the Smith Globe Multicultural Night a couple of days ago. It's a really nice event, and it really just shows what we do as a district for the community. We get a lot of the families come and have dinner with all the staff and students, and it's just a really nice night. I also got a chance to attend the financial aid and college night with my daughter. And once again, I'm amazed at how much money I'm going to be spending in the next few years. And I'm looking forward to tomorrow night is the National Honor Society for Music, and I will be starting up my lunchtime theater, in case you are interested, at Smith Globe. There you go.
How come we didn't get invited to that?
I could send you guys the invitation.
You're trying to keep it quiet.
We can't handle it. You guys are so interested, but have a good evening.
I attended the open house with Mr. Casti's presentation to the high school students. It was very interesting to find out about how the social host law works and how parents can ultimately be liable for what their children do inside their home. That was very interesting to find out. I'm also looking forward to the upcoming football game.
To Friday night.
Friday night.
There you go.
Hope it's warm. But it's, I've gone to, I think, all the games this year. It's been a lot of fun. The record could be a little bit better, but hey.
It's fun.
The food trucks are great. It's a nice time. It's great to see everybody out there. And everybody have a good night.
Thank you. Chris?
May I just say our safe trip home?
Dawn?
Same. Everyone will say it, and see you soon.
Suzanne?
I'm going to echo what they just said. Have a safe trip home and see you soon.
Maeve?
I'm just going to reiterate what I said before about, you know, I thank everybody for coming out for Officer Mulkeen, and hope everybody has a good night.
Donna?
I just wanted to echo the condolences to the Mulkeen and Belker families. I also wanted to say congratulations to Carmen Cos, who is a TA at North Main, who will be honored tomorrow by the Mid Hudson School Study Counselor for her excellence, and also best wishes to the Monroe Woodbury team that will be walking on Sunday at the Commons for the Hudson Valley making strides for breast cancer. Have a good night. Awesome.
Thank you. Allison?
I want to thank Dr. Morales for her presentation, and I also want to thank everybody who was involved, the building principals, the teachers. We're pretty awesome. And it's true. I think we do some amazing things, and, you know, it's amazing because we don't have to do it, and that's what's amazing about it, is we do it because it's the right thing to do. I also attended yesterday the coloring for chemo, the high school students. I'm always so impressed by our kids. I look at Maeve and I say, "We're doing a good job." I mean, when we have kids who are getting up and speaking, that's what we want to do. And so I'm really impressed and grateful, and so it's just, we're doing well. I mean, we could always do better, but I think that we're doing well, and our kids show it. So thank you to the board and to the community for supporting this.
I echo everybody. Thank you, Dr. Morales. I have a book here that I'm trying desperately to finish called The Coddling of the American Mind, and I just recommend it to anybody here or out there. Don Beeler actually turned me on to this. And although it's aimed more at college students and what they're going through and how they're reacting to political correctness and mental health issues, and it delves into perhaps the causes for all of this, I think it might be instructional for our instructors to read this. I believe it was on the bestseller list for a while, so. The Coddling of the American Mind, how good intentions and bad ideas are... The Coddling of the American Mind, How Good Intentions and Bad Ideas Are Setting Up a Generation for Failure, but Not If We Can Help It.
No.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.